Seven thirty.
Good evening, everybody. Today is July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, and the time is exactly seven thirty. To start this meeting, I would like everybody to ask everybody to stand and join us for the pledge.
I would ask everybody to flag of the United States of America. The United Republic, the Constitution stands on its standing ground with principle of liberty of speech as well.
I would ask everybody to turn their microphones on. I know that people in the audience can hear us, but now that it's televised, it may be a little bit more difficult to hear, so just reminder about your microphones. Dale, could I have the roll call, please?
Council President Healy.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman DeCruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill.
Here.
Councilwoman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, can I have a motion to approve A, B, and C from the work session of July tenth, the regular session of July tenth, and the closed executive session of July tenth?
Motion to approve Agenda Item Four, A, B, and C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Item Six A, under licenses, a resolution granting a Class F nineteen-hour beverage license to the Hera Educational Foundation for a Draw-a-Gogo fundraising event marathon to be held Saturday, July twenty-ninth, from five to eight P.M. at the Hera Gallery. Is Adrian Mercy here or somebody else who would like to speak about the event?
Hello. So, yeah, I'm here today to ask for the Class F nineteen-hour beverage license. To give you kind of idea of what we are doing, it's basically a small festival-type event featuring a drawing exposition, food, and, we're hoping, drink. We are inviting fifty artists, each donating an hour of their time, to create art that will be sold to benefit Hera Gallery, one of the fifth-oldest feminist art cooperative in America. We're hoping that the public can enjoy watching art-making, buying artwork on the spot, and enjoy food catered by the local food co-op, and hopefully, like I said, the local brewery, Whalers Brewery. We do have a police detail and a fire detail all set.
What is a go-go?
It's literally just a title we came up with. We figured, hearken back to the fun times of like the go-gos, like, you know, disco techs, kind of having some fun, a little bit of a party vibe, but nothing too crazy, of course.
Can you repeat what you said about the Hera Gallery being the fifth-oldest something?
Yeah, Hera Gallery is actually the fifth-oldest feminist art cooperative in America. It started in nineteen seventy-four by ten local artists, in a time where it was hard for women to get into a lot of the bigger art scene in New York, so they decided to open up one in a actual, an old laundromat that was down where the Contemporary Theater Company is now. And after being there for about thirty or so years, we eventually had to move to where we are now on Ten High Street.
Is this your first time doing this?
It is.
Good.
Well, I'm excited to see this event, and I think, I know you're relatively new to the Hera scene, and you've just been great. It's wonderful to see it, all the meetings and the community events. I think this will be wonderful, so I make a motion that we approve Item Six A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Hope to see you all there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Number Six B, a resolution granting a Class F nineteen-hour beverage license to Mont Senior Clark School for a beer and wine tasting event to be held on Saturday, September sixteenth, from six to ten P.M. on the back lawn of the school. Is Sarah here?
Yes. Hi, how are you? Hi, everybody. This is going to be our second year. You so kindly approved this last year for us, and it was quite a success. Mont Senior Clark will be celebrating their fifty-year anniversary this year, and I created this signature event with the purpose of reconnecting with fifty years of alumni that I have childhood addresses for. So, we created this event as like a welcome-back. It's not only for Mont Senior Clark alum, but also for the community, for members of the different parishes. So, it's really an event to kind of bring everyone together. Being a nonprofit, it's to raise scholarship funds for tuition assistance and after-school programs, so that's my signature event as the development person there. We had about a hundred and twenty people last year. I am expecting that to probably double this year. We do have a police detail onsite, so all precautions have been taken, we're fully insured, so it should run as smoothly as it did last year with your approval, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Seeing that last year was your first year, was there anything that you tried to improve for this year?
Actually, we had, yeah, improvements in terms of the staging. Exquisite events was so great to donate all the staging and the lighting. I had, I needed more lighting, because some of my vendors were kind of out in the dark on the grass a little bit, so we've added some lighting, we've added some more seating, changed up the band to keep it fresh every year. Other than that, it went really, really smoothly. I did check into valet parking in the event that, you know, it gets too big to make sure we had enough onsite parking, which the valet companies I've checked with said we have plenty, so I may keep it at self-parking this year. We're trying to see if that fits into the budget, but...
Who's the band going to be this year?
The band is going to be the Jesse Liam Band.
Motion to approve Item Six B.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Continue.
Thank you very much. Hope to see you guys there. Thanks.
This brings us to Item Number Seven A, which is a public hearing for the purpose of formalizing local recommendations and establishing project priorities for transportation projects for consideration in the State of Rhode Island's Transportation Improvement Program. This is shown on Exhibit One attached to the Agenda for the evening.
Good evening. Okay, let's start with maybe an overview of what the State Transportation Improvement Program is for those who don't know. The State Transportation Improvement Program, also known as the STIP or the TIP, depending on which circle you travel, is a list of transportation projects the State of Rhode Island intends to implement using federal U.S. Department of Transportation funds. The Rhode Island State Planning Council acts as the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the State of Rhode Island, and they are responsible for creating and adopting the STIP. To receive federal funds, a project would have to be listed within the STIP, but the STIP is not necessarily an obligation of funds. It's a list of projects that the state wants to fund, but then would be subject to further review by RIDOT or Ripta or USDOT, depending on the project, and one would be funded once final designs and other considerations are implemented. So, the STIP includes capital and non-capital surface transportation projects, bicycle and pedestrian projects, transportation enhancements such as, you know, the Kingston Station internal facility enhancements, which is funded with the STIP, federal highway projects and safety projects. The State Planning Council is currently soliciting applications for an update to the STIP. All new projects proposed by municipalities must be considered at a public hearing, which is why we are here, so that the public can have a say in what the town proposes. The State Planning Council recently changed how the STIP is compiled. Prior to two thousand sixteen, everything that went into the Transportation Improvement Program came through applications to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the State Planning Council. In the two thousand sixteen update, it actually started with RIDOT's ten-year plan. So, RIDOT created a plan, they said over the next ten years, we want to fund all of these things, and then applications were solicited for additional projects or changes to the projects that RIDOT proposed. So, this is a little bit of a change, which puts us in a different position when we look at projects that we want to propose. So, this year, the trend continued, where we were sent a list of projects that were either in the RIDOT tenure plan or in the existing STIP, and then we were asked to either add things to that list or to amend the projects proposed. So, also in two thousand sixteen, RIDOT changed to a ten-year State Transportation Improvement Program, where it had always previously been a four-year, and the four-year is all that's required by the federal government, but RIDOT wanted to sort of take a proactive approach and look ten-year ahead. So, to submit an application, the town must not only prioritize the projects that we propose, but also the projects that were sent to us on that list. So, you'll see in Exhibit One, there's a list of thirty-one projects. Those include both what RIDOT had already proposed and what the town and the planning board would recommend to include. So, on July eleventh, the planning board reviewed a list of proposed new projects that was generated by staff of public services and planning, with some help from police, and the board voted to recommend the list of proposed projects that you can find in Exhibit One of your Agenda. It should also be noted that the board at their meeting expressed an interest in developing a more clear and data-driven methodology for prioritization, so that when the next solicitation comes up, there would be an easier way to decide what the top priority should be. So, the planning board intends to look at that as part of their work sessions over the next year, so we would be ready for the next solicitation. So, the highest priority projects that are recommended by the board include six new projects and three projects that were previously included in either the ten-year plan or the existing STIP. The highest priority project recommended by the board is the extension of the Mattoonik Beach seawall. Let me get a map up for you. So, as you are aware, the town recently completed installation of the two-hundred-and-two-foot sheet pile wall protecting a portion of Mattoonik Beach Road, as you can see is the blue, approximately in the location of the blue line on the map. To the west, the road remains vulnerable to storm surge, erosion, and overtopping. Preservation of this key collector road is important to maintain access to the two-hundred-and-forty residential units that are situated to the east of the potential breach point. In addition, a twelve-inch public water supply line is located within the Mattoonik Beach Road right-of-way that would be in danger should the road be destroyed. This area, the area to the east of the breach point where the two-hundred-and-forty residential units are situated, is served by two water supply lines. There's one that comes in from Mattoonik Beach Road and one that runs across the Barrier Beach from east Mattoonik. Should the Barrier Beach line be compromised, which would be more likely, because it's not under a road, it's just, you know, within the beach, this line in Mattoonik Beach Road is the only water supply line for those two-hundred-and-forty units. The estimated cost of this project is three million dollars for design and construction. The second priority project...
Leave that one.
Yeah.
Just one point of clarification. The wall that's been constructed is approximately a hundred and eighty feet. The last twenty feet has not been constructed, but will be constructed once the ocean mist building is lifted off of its existing foundation for new pilings to be installed. So, at this point, it's a hundred and eighty feet with a rock enclosure within that last twenty feet.
Thank you. The second priority project is the reconstruction of Route one thirty-eight, which has been included in RIDOT's tenure plan and in the existing STIP. This project consists of the full reconstruction of Route one thirty-eight from Route Two all the way to Route one oh eight, including the Kingston Station Railroad Bridge and three roundabouts. The existing STIP identifies...
Do you want to change the slide?
I don't have a map for Route one thirty-eight, because it's not a new project, so I would, but, sorry. The project consists of full reconstruction. It is included in the STIP as design work had been completed in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, with construction beginning in two thousand twenty, and the allocated funding for this project, which does not include the bridge, is sixteen point zero nine million dollars. The bridge isn't included in that figure, because the way RIDOT does bridges, they put them in what's called "bridge groups." So, this bridge group has thirty-seven bridges with a lump-sum figure, and you can't really allocate a certain amount to a certain bridge. The third priority project is the intersection of Route one thirty-eight, Broad Rock Road, and Stony Fort Road. This intersection was the subject of a road safety assessment in two thousand fifteen, which concluded that realignment of the intersection, installation of a traffic control signal, and addition, and the addition of new signage, striping, and guardrail work were necessary to increase safety. The estimated cost of this project is one point five million dollars, including the acquisition of property that allowed it realignment to occur. The fourth priority project is a study of traffic safety and pedestrian options for Old Tower Hill Road from Route One to Route one oh eight. This segment of Old Tower Hill Road experienced one thousand thirty-one accidents over the past ten years, which is more than ten per, or one hundred per year. The high number of accidents in this area indicates a problem with the traffic pattern within the corridor, which needs to be analyzed to determine appropriate mitigation measures. Also, additional landscaping and pedestrian amenities in this area would provide a better connection between this commercial district and downtown Main Street and the surrounding neighborhoods. The planning board would also like to see additional landscaping incorporated into this area, given its significant gateway into the community.
Chelsea, I have a question. Was there recently a traffic study done on the intersection over where CVS is and Starbucks that was part of a TIP program? Because I feel like, I mean, that was done pretty recently.
John, do you know the answer to that question?
I just wasn't sure if that study incorporated anything from Tower Hill Road.
That was a lame menu, considered a lame menu diet from the bowling alley to the Naragansett, which incorporated the intersection, but it didn't, it didn't look up Old Tower Hill Road.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So, the resurfacing of this portion of Old Tower Hill Road, including the replacement of thirteen hundred feet of sidewalk and the installation of ADA-compliant ramps, is included in the existing STIP, with funding allocated between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. The town doesn't want to delay this work, and so is proposing the study as a separate item. The additional estimated cost of assessing this section of roadway and developing conceptual design solutions is one hundred thousand. If it were just a study, it'd be much less than that without the design. The fifth priority project recommended by the board is installation of sidewalks and drainage improvements along Route one oh eight, from the Meadow Brook Housing Complex to Route one thirty-eight. This road segment is heavily traveled as a main transit route to and from the university, both by private vehicles and Ripta's Bus sixty-six. Existing bus stops along this stretch of road are not accessible by sidewalk, which causes pedestrians to utilize the highway shoulder and creates a dangerous situation. Also, the roadway lacks a proper drainage system, which contributes to drainage problems in the Peasdale Flats area. The estimated cost of this project is one point seven five million dollars. The sixth priority project, which I also do not have a map for, as it is an existing proposed project, is the resurfacing of Route One from Charlestown Town Line to Succotash Road. This project is included in both the tenure plan and the existing STIP, allocated at four point three million dollars. RIDOT has also committed to undertaking guardrail improvements to the section of Route One in conjunction with the resurfacing, and construction is anticipated to begin in two thousand eighteen. Seventh priority project is the replacement of the Cantilever Wooden Pedestrian Bridge adjacent to the Palisades Millstone Arch Bridge, which is also sometimes referred to as the Peasdale Stone Arch. Replacement of this bridge would significantly enhance pedestrian access between the eastern section of Peasdale, the Village Green and the library, and the central core of Peasdale, the bike path and the elementary school. The bridge is included in the existing STIP, in Bridge Group twenty-five. It has thirty-seven bridges in that group, with nine point two six million for all thirty-seven. The estimated cost of adding this pedestrian bridge would be approximately five hundred thousand dollars. The eighth priority recommended by the board is a feasibility study regarding commuter rail in South Kingston. As you know, Kingston Station currently serves as an Amtrak rail station, which connects Southern Rhode Island to Providence, Boston, New York, and points beyond. While the town has historically seen this station as transitioning to a more substantial multimodal hub, and has included language to that effect in the comprehensive plan, there are several considerations that must be looked at before commuter rail could be a viable option. To increase transit service to a level that would work for commuter rail, ridership would need to increase. An increase in ridership could be generated in a number of ways. It could be provided through the provision of additional parking areas, it could have better transit connections to existing population centers, you could also increase density in the immediate vicinity of the station. The planning board feels that all of those options should be studied, constraints given when determining the future of the station. Also, it has been brought to the attention of the town that URI is interested in creating a commuter rail station on their campus, which would be serviced by a rail spur off the main line. There are concerns about creating another rail station in South Kingston and the effect that such station would have on the existing Kingston Station. So, the board, the planning board feels that the study should be made of all the options for South Kingston before a decision is made. The estimated cost of the study would be approximately forty thousand dollars. Final priority project listed in the STIP and RIDOT's tenure plan is the extension of the South County Bike Path with a two-point-one-mile spur to URI. Earlier this year, the town was informed that the bike path extension would be funded through the governor's green economy bond. Town staff have been in discussions with RIDEM and URI about kicking off this project. The State Planning Council has requested that this project be included in our submission so that it can be accounted for in the TIP, in the STIP itself, but funding has already been allocated in the amount of two-point-six million dollars. So, in addition to our priority projects, town staff has been approached by URI to provide letters of support for three projects that the university seeks to propose for inclusion in the STIP. Given the board's request, the planning board's request for a study of commuter rail options in South Kingston, town staff do not feel it is appropriate to support URI's request for a separate commuter rail station at this time. However, there is no objection to providing support to the Plains Road Reconstruction and Upper College Road Reconstruction projects proposed by the university. Should the council be in agreement with the prioritized list of projects recommended by the planning board, it is requested that the council authorize staff to provide a complete application package to the State Planning Council. Staff also requests authorization to draft letters of support for the Plains Road and Upper College Road Reconstruction projects proposed by the university. I'm happy to take questions.
I have a question. Are you limited to how many items you can list on the TIP?
You are not limited. You do have to rank them in order, or you can give them a high, medium, and low priority. The only limiting factor with high, medium, and low is that you can only do a third of the total projects as each category. You could propose any number of projects for inclusion.
And just an observation, your explanation and the data that you provided is very thorough, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chelsea, could maybe you just perhaps reiterate the criteria that has to be met in order to be submitted into an application?
Sure. So, there's sort of two basic threshold criteria that's on the application form. You have to describe the need for the project, and then either the mobility or economic development benefits that would arise from implementation. Beyond those two, there's seven, what they call guiding principles, of the Transportation Improvement Program. They are things like mobility, equity, environmental impacts. I have a full list of them, but they're generally planning, you know, context-based principles that you have to then address to have your project considered.
When it comes to realigning Broad Rock Road and Stony Fort, what happens to the land where, I don't know if you have it up, but what happens to the actual land where the road used to be? If that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think you mentioned they were going to have to acquire land, and then there's going to be land that's not going to be in use anymore.
A lot of the study would be to review what type of land-taking would be necessary. The way that type of a project would work is the state would do appraisals on private ownership and be required to pay fair market value associated with that. All of the property would become part of the state right-of-way that would be used on any realignment.
Good.
I had just one more comment to offer, a general comment, and I expressed this during the work session, but number five, the sidewalks on one oh eight, just, I know we've tried that many years and haven't been able to get traction on it, but I hope this is the year that we do, because I think that that should be a big priority for us, all the residents that live off Curtis Corner Road, the neighborhoods, connecting them to URI and connecting them to the businesses that are along Kingston Road even. You know, I just hear, if I were to hear one complaint about sidewalks consistently, it would be one oh eight. It's just so dangerous to walk along that street, and I think really necessary for the neighborhoods surrounding it. So, I'm glad to see it in your top nine. I think, I can't justify it being more important than the top four, but I just wanted to put that out there. Anything we can do to support that initiative further, you know, I'd be interested in.
And I think, as we discussed earlier, there's an opportunity here to connect it to the two other projects that RIDOT has already committed to on either side, so the one thirty-eight reconstruction and then the work that's being done at the, at the intersection to put crosswalks and ADA-compliant ramps in. There also is a case to be made that it is our, you know, Ripta bus route, and where there are bus stops, there should be also sidewalks. So, we'll, we'll make that case as strongly as we can in the application.
Thank you.
Yeah, to piggyback on Liz, that, at that intersection especially and along that route, people who are waiting for the buses, it's, I travel it every day, it's just not safe.
No, I agree.
And the Route One project, just repaving, would the guardrail and median improvements have any impact on the scenic highway designation that they're...
We have actually talked about this with RIDOT at the Transportation Technical Review Committee meetings. They are proposing to take out some of the trees that would be either in the way or would cause a traffic safety problem, but we have requested that they replace those trees with, so if it's a, you know, larger caliber tree, replace them with more trees throughout the corridor. We've also asked that they go to the State Scenic Highway Board, RIDOT, with their proposal, and get any feedback that they might have in advance of construction.
This was, this was very thorough.
It was very thorough. Thank you, Chelsea. At this point in time, because this is an open public hearing, if there are any of the members of the audience who would like to come up and speak, I would just ask that you respectfully submit your name and where your place of residence is. Anybody would like to speak?
Hi, Tim O'Neil. Two thirty-five Middle Bridge Road. Some of you may recognize me from about a year ago, from my last visit and a few emails that you've gotten from me. Chelsea did a great job. In fact, she's why we have quite a few members of Middle Bridge Road community here to figure out how we get on this list for a traffic study to be performed on Middle Bridge Road to, for a traffic calming study. I have been advocating for this for over a decade and have made very little progress, frankly. I, can I, is there any way for me to get on this machine, or is that something I can't do from my phone? No? We won't try and figure that out. But Bryant, you're new to this, Joe, I think you were here the last time, Abel, Meg, and Liz, you obviously know. You know, we have a persistent and consistent issue down on Middle Bridge Road. The town administration doesn't necessarily agree with the residents' assessment of the situation, and I think that the only way to resolve that conflict is for a traffic study to be performed. The traffic safety assessment that Chelsea mentioned from two thousand fifteen that pointed out the dangers at Broad Rock, the Broad Rock Road intersection, also cited Middle Bridge Road as being a road of concern, and a traffic study was recommended. I went to the TTRC meeting this last Thursday. I inquired with Mr. Schock about why that had not been executed, and he said that the funding was not available. So, I'm here to request the funding for that traffic calming study to be executed on Middle Bridge Road.
I don't know if, Steve, you wanted to talk about it, or John, but I think it was more than just a lack of funding that was causing hesitation on the administration's part.
I think the, first, I think the first comment is, is we are proposing... I think the, first, I think the first comment is, we are proposing projects for consideration by the state DOT, acting as the agency that will deal with the federal government. We are not in and by ourselves being able to say which projects will be funded. So, anything we ask for has to be based on an application, as has already been mentioned, that's going to look at the evaluation criteria. And those are the mobility benefits, cost efficiencies, effectiveness, economic development, environmental impacts, and support of local or state goals, and safety and security and equity. Staff through the Police Department and through the Public Services Department agrees wholeheartedly with Mr. O'Neill that, in fact, there is heavy traffic on that road. Where the disagreement comes in is the fact that the staff does not believe that the speed is the issue on that road, but rather the capacity of the road to handle the existing traffic, particularly during the summer months when it's being used as a cut-through for either narrow against it to the Bridgetown or as a go-around for the red light at 138 on one. So, we do agree that there is heavy traffic there. We are monitoring that with the Police Department. I think the important thing is that when we look at the traffic speeds in that area, 71% of the vehicles traveling on Middle Bridge Road are traveling under 35 miles an hour. His posted speed is at 25 miles an hour. We have implemented from the road assessment project, all of the different recommendations that were made. I think it's got to be clear that there were three types of recommendations made on the roadway safety assessment. One was for immediate, within six months. The second was near-term, under two years, and three was long-term improvements. Each of the improvements that we could make or that the state was willing to provide funding for has been completed. And once those are completed, the traffic studies are done as far as the speed limits and the speed on that road. We're not finding any traffic accidents that are related to speed. Of the accidents that the Police Department reported on us in the past two years, what they found was that one accident was the result of a driver falling asleep, another one was driving under the influence, and a third was a driver in attention when they were manipulating a CD player. So, we're not finding that there is, in fact, a speed problem on that road. It's a capacity issue. The capacity issue isn't going to be addressed through traffic calming. The main concern that the staff has at this point is how they would justify within the application to meet those criteria to be able to accomplish getting that type of a study. And the broader question is, how many other streets should be entitled to that same type of a consideration? So, I think that when the staff reviewed it and the planning board reviewed it, they did not see this as a high enough priority based on the data that they were looking at, based on the speeds on that road, to justify more than what's been accomplished to date. I know that certainly the neighborhood may disagree with that, but that's the findings of the departments when they've tried to look at the data as independently as possible.
Thank you.
I respectfully disagree. The data that he cites differs from the data that I have. We, I don't know where he's getting his information from. I'm assuming it's from one of the more recent applications of the speed feedback signs that we have. What seems to be lost in trying to explain the problem to the town staff is that the demographics of Middle Bridge Road differ from all of the other collector roads that they've cited in the past. There are no, there aren't four foot-road races held on Curtis Corner Road every year. There is no on-street parking to the density that it is on Middle Bridge Road. They don't have people pulling kayaks and paddleboards trying to make their way to the river. They don't have multiple shoreline access points. They don't have boat trailers parking on the road during the summer months because the Pollock Bolt Launch is full. This is different than anywhere else. And I'm going to put some numbers, or try to get you to conceptualize the numbers here because you may not be familiar with them. 2,500 cars per day go down Middle Bridge Road, and 200, 2,200 of them exceed the posted speed limit. And the 85th percentile is 35 miles an hour, which more or less matches with this number. The top speed was 64 miles an hour. But every 2.5 minutes, a car exceeds the posted speed limits by more than 10 miles an hour. So, the perception of the residents is, there's a lot of cars going really fast. And 10 miles an hour, the difference, if you want to go to the NIST website, the difference at 20 miles an hour, if a pedestrian is struck at 20 miles an hour, one will suffer injuries. At 30 miles an hour, five will suffer injuries, and at 40 miles an hour, nine out of the 10 people will suffer catastrophic injuries. These numbers, 25 versus 35, don't sound like a lot, but they are profound. We don't have any sidewalks. We don't have any breakdown lane. The road is narrow. There is a house that is eight feet from the road surface on Middle Bridge Road. So, it requires special attention, and it needs to be treated differently than any of the other roads that are mentioned and that the town consistently cites as justification for not performing the extra work. And what we're asking for is a traffic calming study to be performed. Let the engineers do their job, and let the data speak for itself.
Mr. O'Neill, the numbers that you used, is that from a different study, or?
I have been working with the SKPD for a decade to try and get some relief for this problem. At multiple occasions, they've stationed a speed feedback sign that collects data, and they've shared that data with me. I would have to go back through my notes to see which one I pulled this off of, but I have multiple years, different times that it was done. And it's done, if it's done with a speed feedback sign, it's a bit different than when they put the tubes in the road because people see the speed feedback sign, they back off a little bit, so you don't get the real deal. You know, Ride Out recommended a traffic calming study. To me, I don't know what other justification we need at this point. That's Ride Out telling you that they should engage the residents, their exact words, which has not happened at all. In fact, quite the opposite. It got contentious at the TTRC meeting with the officer basically telling me I'm wrong and that I'm kind of nuts to be there to have this complaint. And all these people here, these are all Middle Bridge residents, all here. And, well, you all have an opportunity to talk. So, you know, we're here because it's an issue, and I encourage you, implore you, to take a walk down Middle Bridge Road with your dog and see how it feels. See what 35 versus 25 feels like.
Would anybody else like to?
My name is George Daglery. I live at 90 Riverside Drive and have for 20 years, and I love Middle Bridge. Stephen brought up the point of capacity. Yes, I agree. Capacity is far exceeded, and it's worse now than ever, than I can ever remember with the new traffic rerouting applications on everybody's phone, especially Waze. Everybody knows where Middle Bridge Road is now. Last Saturday afternoon, the traffic was backed up at least 100 cars from Bridgetown Road, almost all the way down to Radial Drive. We couldn't go, we couldn't leave the neighborhood. I ride a motorcycle. I pulled out of Shad Bush Road, going north one day, to look at, staring at a car head-on in my lane, passing somebody that they thought was going too slow. That's what we deal with day after day. It doesn't change. We need help. It's a straightaway. It's conducive to put the pedal down and go. There's nothing breaking that flow, all the way down Middle Bridge Road, and I can stand there and watch it. Excuse me. It's not going to get better. It is going to get worse. We're not engineers. We may not have the right solution, but a study is warranted, and it should be done. We shouldn't be wasting any more time. Someone is going to get hurt.
Thank you. Meg, can I just add something real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Adding anything on to this prioritization list is not a guarantee of funds, correct? Like I said, with the 108 sidewalk being on that list, you said for years and years and years, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to get done.
That was my initial statement. I wanted to make it clear. The council could add any project to the list to be submitted to the state. Obviously, we would have to fill out the application for that project, but many of our projects have been submitted repeatedly, which they're not being placed onto the Transportation Improvement Plan that the state puts out. I mean, the obvious answer is that I don't think any community is getting all of the projects that they ask for, simply because the amount of money that's going to be required or that's available from the feds for this type of programming, all of the different funding sources, is not adequate to meet the demand placed by all 39 cities and towns. So, yes, projects can be added to the list. We could put an application together for a traffic calming study for Middle Bridge. What we're saying is, I don't think that we want to put a project out there if we don't anticipate that we can support it with the data that the Police Department has collected to date. That's the reason why we weren't looking at it. And again, it's not a case of us being against anybody or not wanting to do necessary work, but there's got to be a realistic expectation that the project can be funded. But tonight, if you were to add it to the list as a project for consideration, we could submit the application with all of the other applications that are here. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be approved by the state.
Did DOT direct us to do a traffic calming study, as has been referenced a few times? Can you explain that?
No, the road safety assessment was really, the town identified several areas, and what they did is they came up with various recommendations. As far as the, on the long term, the conduct of a formal speed study during both school and peak tourist time was one of the recommendations. But the comment was that the two studies should follow all of the other improvements being made, and then an evaluation as to whether the other improvements did, in fact, minimize what the speeds were on that road. From a Police Department's perspective, whether Mr. O'Neill agrees with it or not, they felt that the improvements that they had made, both near-term and immediate, had had impact on it, and if, and that was the reason why we weren't going forward with that. The other thing that we had talked last time the folks from Middle Bridge were in is we said we wanted to provide better controls and better data collection. One of the things that the council has done is the council has authorized the purchase of two additional signs, portable signs, that will be interactive for the Police Department to be able to measure both traffic counts as well as speeds, and for us to be able to have different messaging available as a means of trying to provide for the traffic calming efforts. So, we're making the efforts that we can, that we feel that we've got the financial resources to be able to do, but at this point, we did not feel that we had the justification to go forward with that application. If the council wishes, we'll put that application in, but again, there's no guarantee that if the council supports it, that the State Planning Council via DOT will in fact support it.
Thank you. I have just a quick question. This, I can tell by all of the people who are here, you're very passionate about this area, and your presence here tonight absolutely sends a message. I will say that. I guess my question would be, so that I have a better understanding, if this were to be added to the state to look at with this application, and they really move forward with it, I think that would be great. But what happens if it doesn't get approved? What's next?
Again, the only way that you would address that, if it wasn't provided with support from the state, it would be with local dollars.
Can I ask a quick question? When it comes to collecting the speed data, is it the signs that tell you how fast you're going, or are they something different?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
Well, we're getting the average speed on that particular road. What are we using to get the average speed?
On the most recent study that was done, after you, after the council had received Mr. O'Neill's most recent email, there was a study of, during that survey period, Police Department had 1,689 vehicles went through when the sign was in place. 94 were found to be compliant, meaning that they were traveling at 25 miles an hour or under, or within the 25 to 35 mile an hour range. So, there was a 90, essentially what the police were saying to me is, 94% of the vehicles within that sample were under 35 miles an hour.
We bought, we bought 30, oh-my-god, slow-down signs, and they were posted all up and down the road in front of that speed sign before that traffic study was taken. The data that I shared is a bit different. We've had to take this into our own hands. In fact, all signs were stolen within 16 hours of being put out. We went back and found them in somebody's yard. One of my neighbors was confronted because he was taking pictures of the sign, and elderly gentleman was confronted by a driver and said, "What are you taking my picture for?", and it got contentious with one of the drivers. I mean, this is getting out of hand. We've tried to do what we can as the residents. Now, we're putting ourselves at personal risk, and we implore you to take action, using town's money. This is a town's road. It's a town's responsibility. I pay taxes to the town, and I want you to fix the problem. It's affecting my property values, my personal safety, et cetera, et cetera, and everybody else here feels exactly the same way. And we're going to be back at every single opportunity to be here, giving you this message.
We just went through a list of projects that are costing millions of dollars. What we want done in Middle Bridge is a tiny fraction of that. The town can come up with the money. It's not millions, it's not hundreds of thousands. It's a small project by comparison. There's no reason why it can't be funded.
Steve, is there an estimate that a traffic study would cost on a road of that length? Is there?
I think that the ranges that we've seen, depending on the scope of the work, would be probably between a low of 10 and a high of 30, the 30 being where there'd be public participation meetings for feedback before the consultant would come up with recommendations. So, that's the range that I think that you would have for that type of a study.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jim Mutsucci. I'm probably one of the elders of the tribe down here because I've been here since '55. So, I've seen a lot of changes on Middle Bridge Road. I've got a couple of questions. I keep hearing about the improvements we already made on Middle Bridge Road. If that's painting 25 miles an hour on two different areas in Middle Bridge Road, one way up near Bridgetown, where nobody, I don't care what they do up there because nobody lives up there, and one down at the bend, just with Timmy and the gang, if, if that's the improvements, if that's all we've done so far, we haven't done much. I haven't heard any talk about some of the other options. Having a state study and everything else is great, but, you know, I think we talked at one time about speed bumps, and that was, there was nicks on that. Now, I've gone through a lot of places that have speed bumps, and they work. And it was the fire department couldn't get down there to put out a fire or whatever. I don't buy it. We talked about stop signs, not something, not something that's going to cost a million bucks. If you put a stop sign at the end of Riverside Drive, another one up near the park, Treaty Rock there, another one down at Tory Road, it would stop these maniacs from coming down 100 miles an hour, and I do disagree. I don't care what your study says. I live on Middle Bridge Road, and I'll tell you very honestly, somebody's going to get killed, and if we don't do something, then I'm going to come back and I'm going to look at everybody in this room and say, you know, you had your chance, because we've been at this for a long time, trying to get, we don't need a freeway down there. We don't need, I mean, it would be nice to have sidewalks. I tell you right now, if you put sidewalks up, it's I tell you right now, if you put sidewalks up, it's still not going to, it's not going to stop people from coming down there at 100 miles an hour. Now, knock down Middlebridge, I'd be the first guy to help you. We should have never put Middlebridge back because it was a nice dead-end street. And all it is now is a cut-through, as you say, for everybody from Narragansett. Everybody from Narragansett. I've never seen so many BMWs, Mercedes, and Jaguars. People on Middlebridge Road don't live that lifestyle. But these people come down like maniacs, throw in 300 motorcycles on the weekend, and you really got a spot. So, I guess what I'm talking about again is that we could also put a toll at Middlebridge. You'd make a lot of money for the town, and that would probably keep some people from coming over.
Would you do just trucks or cars and trucks?
Oh, you go the whole route. Because I'll tell you what, there is some trucks, the Cotty Boys have some accounting with the drivers coming up there 50 or 60 miles an hour in those trucks, too. And again, overall, honest, this is not a town bash. I think, I think, so I'm very, very proud to live in South Kingstown. I think we've got a great town. Middlebridge Road is an exception. It was a dirt road when I first moved here, and there's been a lot of change. But I think the bottom line is, as is Narrow River. It's another, it's impossible. So, it's not going to change, guys. We're going to have to change it. And again, we can go through the state, and we can request a state study, and we can get into an argument as to whether we put a, another train track at URI, or we fix Middlebridge Road. I don't think it's that big a deal. I think it's something we could do, initially with some stop signs, maybe some speed bumps. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people that have reasons why we shouldn't do it. But guys, we've got to do something. And we're out of ideas. The only thing we can do is come and say, "Help us out." So, if it's a study, fine, I guess we're going to have to live with a study, but I don't put a lot of credence in it. I didn't put any credence in the 25 miles an hour painted on the streets either, and it didn't work. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you give us some consideration.
Thank you. Would anybody else like?
Important for everybody to understand, the idea of having the stop signs is something that we have to meet what the warrant requirements are for us to put a stop sign up. If we don't, and somebody runs through that stop sign, and we don't, it doesn't meet the requirements the state or the federal government establishes for that, the town assumes a liability. So, as far as doing that going forward, we've been told that we can't put those out without doing a traffic, a traffic warrant review. That looks at the number of accidents, the number of interactions that are going to look for as far as. It's not a case where I wouldn't like to put them there, but unfortunately, I'm stuck with the responsibility to be able to look at what the legal requirements are. The thing I wanted to mention is, it sounds great, I wish we had speed bumps everywhere in town. The problem is, the problem with the speed bump is that as soon as you put a speed bump in, if a car goes over it at 50 or 60 miles an hour, they go airborne. If they go airborne, they lose control of the vehicle, and there's going to be a serious, a serious injury, or there's, and it may be somebody who has nothing to do with it that's injured. So, it sounds like a great solution, but we've got to be careful that what we do is something that, one, legally we can defend, and, two, from a practical standpoint, doesn't make sense. I recall when, at the State House, when they put the first elevated bump in, or actually it was a dip, they ended up with several accidents there. They had to change it because of the vehicles going airborne. The same thing would happen with that. We can get away with putting a speed bump in a town park where the speed's supposed to be 10 miles an hour, and we've got curved roads. But if you take a straightaway, and you're going to put somebody, as Tim said, somebody was going as fast as 64 miles an hour, if they hit that, there's going to be some serious damage. So, please, understand it's not an unwillingness to work with you or to try to try things. It's really a question of, how do we do it and stay where we can legally defend it, and we're not creating a bigger safety problem? So, again, I'm not against what you're looking for. What I'm trying to do is to find a way to accommodate those needs.
Tim, in order to speak, could you please come up to the podium, because it's a public hearing?
There are a variety of traffic calming techniques that are very low cost, that have minimal impact, and not have any of the risk that he's alluding to. They do have costs associated with them, and it seems to me as though the bond rating is more important for this town than public safety, and that's the issue. Spend the money, implement the techniques, and just do the job.
So, for tonight's discussion, it sounds to me like adding this to this STIP list, if it, if you, if you get approved, it's a long project. So, this is a discussion, at least for this public hearing, that I think I wouldn't support it for your benefit, because if it makes it to this list, there's no guarantee it'll get you money. Sounds to me like this is a much more urgent discussion that maybe has to happen, either at our next budget session, or before then, perhaps for the study, but the study has to be justified. And I don't disagree with it. I know what you folks are living with, or you wouldn't be here.
And the other thing is, too, if we decided to, if we decide to, or decided to, make this part of the STIP program, as Joe said, it's, if it gets approved, that's wonderful. But where is it going to be on the priority list? And your needs seem to be more immediate than a long-term project that the state will designate funds to 10 years down the road, perhaps. So, I think it's our responsibility to talk about other ways that we can, whether it be at the budget session, whether we have another meeting and discuss it again. You know, I don't know. I just know you're all very passionate about it, and you care a lot. Otherwise, you wouldn't all be here tonight.
The most expedited way to address it with local funds is through the capital improvement program. We do that on a yearly basis. The next one is under preparation at this point. It will be delivered to the council on or about December 1st. Public Works will need to take a look at the different priorities that they have and bring those forward. If the council is not satisfied and wants to add money to that overall capital improvement program, they could, and those funds would be available effective as of July of next year. If, in fact, the council wanted it expedited and outside of the budget process, it could be done, but it would require us determining a funding source that was acceptable to the council. So, the study could be done on a local basis. I think the problem that staff had is in looking at applying for federal dollars, where we didn't feel that we had the numbers to provide the justification for it being incorporated onto the state planning document.
Could I make one suggestion or a comment? We have several problems with our roads, our concerns in our town, I think that we can all agree upon. One of the things I would recommend considering, I'm not saying we have to make a decision tonight, but something to think about for the future, is coming up with some funds, not just for Middlebridge, but for, like, say, Mattoonik Beach Road and other roads, and looking at it from economies of scale, having someone come in and help us determine what speed calming techniques we could use, and then using that information to decide where we go from there.
And I'll say it just once more. I don't think, even though you say the STIP was last week, I don't think that's where you belong, so.
Yeah, I have to agree with Joe when he said earlier, too. I don't, if, if I thought putting you on this TIP list would be helpful, I would, but I don't think that, I mean, it's a long list, and we've seen programs that have been on this list for literally like a decade that have gotten no traction, and you'd get lost in there, and you could easily use every year as an excuse, "Well, it's on the list, it's on the list, we're waiting for funds." So, I do think it warrants different consideration for separate funds through a capital improvement plan. I mean, I think that that would be the most effective and the quickest route to getting the study done.
And as Steve said, we could go quicker. We would have to find the funding. There are some, you know, categories that a piece of equipment will come in on the bid, and we may have funds there, so.
I'm not opposed to that at all.
So, I would just, you know, we recently created a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. Hopefully, it's going to be looking at issues like this around the town. I mean, we've talked numerous times here at the council, perhaps even the last time you guys were all here, about the potential for traffic calming on a series of roads with striping that creates the perception of narrower roadways with fog lines, something like that. I think Middlebridge, Mattoonik, a couple other roads in town really would make sense for that treatment, and not be that expensive. I'm concerned about this study. I don't know that it's going to come to any findings that are going to be very helpful to Middlebridge Road in terms of, you know, the speed feedback signs. The effect is pretty minimal, as you know. But I wonder if there is a study that can tell us anything about the capacity of the road. You know, we're talking about calming the traffic, which doesn't seem to be the biggest problem on the road, although speeding is certainly there. It's probably the same it is on most of the roads. But the capacity seems to be the overwhelming problem, that there's just much more traffic than there used to be. And is there any way?
Something that does need to be resident in any study that's done, because that appears to be a broader question rather than just the speed itself.
Do we have any other comments from citizens that would like to come up to the podium?
My name is Ron Barubi. I live at 465-8 Middlebridge Road. I live at the bottom of Torrey. A few years ago, a lady was killed there. Excessive speed coming down the hill, out of control, hit a tree, somebody died. It appears to me that, put it this way, if we turn Middlebridge Road into a one-way road, so you can only go in one direction, is that something the council does? Is that within the purview of your authority to?
We talked about that at one point. Our concern would be whether or not, well, I don't know if it's the legality, but let's just take, let's just say we could do it. The concern would be with the residents of Middlebridge.
That's my point. I didn't want to, like, ask you to do something, you know, there's not magic. I don't want to turn it into a one-way road. I have to live there. However, if you were to turn that into a no-through traffic on weekends, it would get rid of half of the chaos that happens right now. Because every car coming down that road has an app that says, "Don't take me through red lights, don't take me here, get me out of traffic." If you had a regulation that said, "Hey, this is a no-through traffic on weekends," then you could send a letter to all the GPS guys who programmed their algorithms and say, "Hey, guess what? You can't go that way. That's, you know, you've got to make a left here and take a turn there and go down Bridgetown Road." It's a simple solution. It doesn't require a whole lot of money. All you've got to do is say, "Yeah, one way, or one way to solve it is to make it no-through traffic on weekends," and then send that letter off, and the GPS will change and not directing, because the cars coming down there are not folks who are coming from North Kingstown. They're coming from like all over the state of Rhode Island. It's a quick fix. It doesn't require a whole lot of study, it doesn't require you to do like anything excessive, unless there's some regulation stipulation, some magical box thing that you need to do. If you decide it doesn't work, you can just like take a look, strike the regulation, and it no longer exists. It's a quick fix, and it might get rid of this problem. Not necessarily get rid of the speed problem, or, you know, girl that was killed on Torrey, it's not going to fix that problem, but it will get rid of like the traffic. And it's like, I pull out of my driveway, I don't have to worry about getting hit. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you think of that idea, Steve?
I don't think it's a good idea. I'm not sure whether or not it's feasible or not, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Okay.
And I would think that you would not want to limit it to weekends, because I think you have a volume problem there through all the warm months. Yeah.
Well, we use Waze, and we report cops that aren't there all the time, so that...
Yep.
We use the apps, and so the residents will report, "There's cops there all the time," when there aren't really cops there, so that the machine says, "Oh, there's a cop up there," and the guy slows down. I mean, we have tried every creative way we can to try to address this with what little power we have available to us. And I sent an article to a couple of you guys about the town engaging the residents in their creative ways of solving this problem. I mean, I have a dozen ideas that are based in my knowledge of traffic calming techniques that are used around the world, that would be relatively low cost, that if there was some, a sense of partnership in solving this problem, instead of the adversarial relationship we've had, and to this point, I would welcome the opportunity to give those suggestions to you and anybody else that's willing to listen. I have cost in mind, and I have efficacy in mind. Measure the technique, see if it had the desired impact. I know that our $25, 25 signs, they worked, and they worked for a little while, and I know because people came up to me and said, "Hey, those signs are great." I noticed them as soon as I came around the corner. So, signage has limited effect, but it can work, and a combination of all of these creative ways of trying to solve the problem, I think, could ultimately lead to a resolution, keeping cost in mind. We don't want to, you know, break the bank.
Tim, did you figure out why somebody stole the signs?
Probably contempt from me would be my guess. Waving my rake at them as they drive by too fast.
Thank you. Any more comments?
That type of work.
Yes. And any more comments?
Hi, my name's Carl Lucas. I live at 520 Middlebridge Road. My wife Katie, we have two daughters, they're eight and 11, and we live directly across from Pollock Avenue, looking down the street at the boat ramp, and it's like a super high traffic all the time in the summer. And the speeding is not just a summertime thing, it's all year round. I mean, people cut through to go to Prouse, like, in the early morning, sometimes the school bus will pull over to let the cars pass the school bus when they're picking up my kids, and we've counted up to 25 cars pass the school bus when he pulls over in front of my house. I've seen people pass on the straightaway where I live, it's a long straightaway to Torrey Road, every day, at least once or twice a day, we see people passing, crossing the double yellow line, doing probably in excess of 50 miles an hour every day. We have a park down the street, Treaty Rock Park. I would never let my kids go there, because I will not let my daughters walk down the street, I won't let them ride their bikes. I can't, I couldn't sit in my house and relax with knowing that my kids are out in the street. I'd be terrified that they'd be run down in the street. So, I mean, and all of my neighbors feel the same way, all of us that live down there. We're not making this up, and I just would like to corroborate that for the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we close the public hearing, one of the things that I did hear Steve say, and the immediacy of this is probably sooner, rather than getting the state involved, as we've all kind of have a consensus on right now. But what I would ask is that you formulate or get together as a group and send a memorandum. I know you don't want to continue to have to do that, but it would give us the opportunity to all get together and see what we can come up with and what we can do to try to alleviate some of the stress and safety issues that you're all feeling.
And, Tim, don't be, or everybody, don't, I wouldn't be discouraged by that suggestion, because even if, suppose we didn't vote you guys on to the TIP because even if, suppose we didn't vote you guys onto the tip program tonight, because this isn't on the agenda as a separate item, we couldn't say vote tonight to fund a study, just because of the open meeting laws. So that's not pushing you off or blowing you off, that's just the legality of us not being able to vote or decide on something tonight. So, I just wanted to make that point. I have no doubt, I was down on Middlebridge Road this weekend, and I could not believe how many people were using it. And I remember when that was like a little sneaky spot where you're like, "All the locals know," and it's not that at all anymore. So, I think it's great that you all came out, and I think, you know, I don't live on a busy street, so I have the luxury of not having to worry about that, and, but it doesn't stop me from thinking about what that's like. You're talking about your children. I've got two kids of my own, and I don't hesitate to let them alone in the front yard, because, you know, I know even if they did go into the street, chances of a car coming by would be insignificant. That's not a luxury you have. And so I think that it's great that you guys came out, and I do want to make sure that this stays at the forefront of, and this isn't something we push off and push off and push off. So hopefully, tonight we'll be able to leave that impression.
We hear you.
Yes.
And I'm in favor of a study, but I would like to see it more at the whole town level on the problem roads that we have, because I would hate to address one street and then have something happen on another street. I think all the streets are important.
Yeah, no, I, that's a good idea.
Well, there would be a priority, of course, so, you know, I think clearly Middlebridge would be at the top of that list. There's someone else that wants to speak.
Oh, please, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Tom. I live in South Kingston. I don't live in Middlebridge, but I'd just like to say to the people of Middlebridge, "You're doing a good job, because I got three tickets."
Tom, that would be volume and speed.
If there are no further comments from the public, or any from the council members here, I would like to have somebody entertain the motion to close the public-
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we will take a vote on Chelsea's presentation. Item six A as-
No.
No?
They're asking us for two motions, I think. Am I correct, Steve? You're asking for two motions here. So the first motion, South Kingston Town Council hereby approves the town's local priority assignments, authorizes the submission of a complete application package to the State Planning Council for consideration in the development of the 2017 update to the STIP for federal fiscal years 2018 to 2027. In addition, the council urges the State Planning Council to include positive consideration for two of the projects proposed by the University of Rhode Island, namely Upper College Road and Plains Road reconstruction. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second motion is the town council, South Kingston Town Council hereby authorizes staff to execute legislative support for Plains Road reconstruction and Upper College Road reconstruction projects being proposed by the University of Rhode Island.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Moving on to item number eight A, which is resolutions adopted July nineteenth by the Barrington Town Council in support of the adoption of the fiscal year state budget for 2018, and in opposition to House Bill 5593 and Senate Bill 0285 regarding continuation of expired contracts, and House Bill 5601A, Senate Bill 0896A regarding optional retirement for police and firefighters which have been transmitted to the governor for signature. We have received these, and the council would like to direct-
Based on the fact that the first item in the communication has been vetoed by the governor, and the second item has been passed as law, I would make a motion to place this communication on file. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item eight B, which is a resolution that was adopted June 22nd, 2017, by the North Smithfield Town Council, proposing legislation to provide reimbursement for costs of the municipal police training academy when an officer leaves one municipality for another after working for less than a period of five years. It's received, and the council further directs-
For our discussion in our work session, we already have a policy on this, and I make a motion that we put item eight B on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to eight C. It's a communication dated July 1st from Roland J. Fiore tendering his resignation from the Economic Development Committee is received and placed on file, and council further directs-
Make a motion that we accept his resignation and send him a letter of gratitude for all his service on the Economic Development Committee. Second, and I would like to thank Roland personally for his efforts. He was a good addition to that committee.
Very good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this point, we move to item number nine, which is comments from interested citizens. If anybody would like to come up to the podium and state your name, and if you have any comments for the council, now would be your time to do it. Okay. Moving on to number ten, the town manager's report.
I have three things to report on tonight. One is I want to make reference to the appointment of Joseph P. Jabber Jr. as our new police chief. I think all know that Joe has been serving in the capacity as interim chief since Chief Espia left us in November of last year. During that time, Joe has worked with the department administration in terms of dealing with a number of major policies within the department. These include use of force, pursuit requirements, as well as promotional considerations and promotional ordinances. These are key features that are necessary in any police department, and for us to be able to have those go forward with full support of the membership itself is rewarding. I'm happy with where we're going as a department. I think Joe has made the transition from being a policeman to a manager, in terms of taking over administration, which sometimes isn't as much fun as being a policeman. And he's done an admirable job in accomplishing that end. So I want to thank him for the time that he's provided to us on an interim basis, welcome him as our new chief, and look forward to years of service as we go forward, and the fulfillment of his mission, which is the best performance for the police department. So Joe, congratulations, and-
Thank you. I'm not sure I deserve that, but thank you, Steve, and your administration, the town council, and all of the citizens of South Kingston. I'd also like to thank my department, civilian and sworn personnel who have supported me through the last eight months. So, thank you all, and I'll strive to do the best I can.
Lucky to have you, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item I wanted to look at this evening is where do we stand with the state budget? I provided the council with a memo on July 13th, because at the last council meeting there was a question that was raised relative to the impact of no state budget being in place on municipalities. I suggested at this point that I did not see that it would be a problem for South Kingston, because we were under the impression that the forty-five million dollars for state aid to education, new dollars, was being held in abeyance rather than the existing distribution formula that was being used. What we came to find out is that with education, if in fact the budget stays with the existing year's budget in place, or I should say the budget that closed on June 30th of 2017, what we would see is the school department would lose approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than was expected. So in other words, that budget at this point would be three hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of balance. I have talked with the superintendent and requested a remediation action by the school department, which is required by statute, and the school department will be considering an amendment to their budget, where they will be increasing the appropriation from fund balance in the amount of the three hundred and thirty as an interim step to address the imbalance in that budget. I have indicated that I would be supportive of that on a temporary basis, until we find out where the state is going. At this point, there's still belief that we will see the Senate back in session in August. To date, the loss in the month of July is limited to about eighty-eight hundred dollars. But if this continues, instead of eighty-eight hundred, it's going to track at about twenty-eight thousand dollars a month for every month that this budget is not, is not brought forward and completed. Recognize that the state budget goes back to adoption in June of 2017. In January of 2016, in January of 2017, the governor proposed amendments to that budget to bring it into balance. Those amendments were not passed, because they were part of the overall budget adoption process for the seventeen eighteen year, which means that the state budget that closed as of June 30th of 2017 will be out of balance. This creates difficulty for municipalities as we go forward, because of the uncertainty, bonding companies will be looking at this as to other local budgets in balance. So it's important for us to continue to ask the General Assembly to deal with the issue and come up with a final budget. On the municipal side, the projected cost would be about twenty-three thousand dollars, where the budget to stay and no new budget adopted for the seventeen eighteen year. We will make adjustments within our revenue statement that will address that potential shortfall.
Twenty-three thousand dollars a month? Or total?
No, that would be, no, twenty-three thousand for the total year.
So is the twenty-eight thousand dollars a month on the school department side? Gotcha.
School department in the first month was about eighty-five hundred dollars for July. The reason that is, is because the formula for distribution of state aid to education is less in the month of July and August, because there are no school in session. So in July, it'll be about eighty-five hundred, but it'll jump up to about twenty-eight thousand dollars a month in August, and each month thereafter to get up to that three hundred and thirty thousand. Our overall loss would be in the pilot program and in the public service corporation tax that we receive. And the reason we would be losing money is because new taxes that were planned for the seventeen eighteen state budget have not been implemented, which means that they are going to have to reset for each month that they do not have a budget. They do not have any of the adjusted revenue stream coming in, and they're not going to be able to go back and get that retroactively. So I want to make it clear that we are looking at it from a municipal perspective, and also providing some guidance to the schools on the steps that they need to take. But the key issue here is that the General Assembly needs to get their business completed so that we can all determine where we're going. Council's aware that we put our tax bills out for July 1st, inclusive of tax bills without the revisions that will be necessary if that state budget is passed as proposed and adopted by the General Assembly from the House. If that's the case, we'll have to make adjustments for that, but that was something that was anticipated, even when we were assuming the budget was going to be adopted on June 30th. So if you have any questions on it, I'd be glad to answer them at this point. The third item I wanted to report on tonight is that I want to provide public notice that I have advised the council that I will be retiring from town service sometime at the close of this calendar year. The target date should provide the council with sufficient time to engage an executive search firm to assist the council in the conduct of a formal recruitment and selection process for the appointment of a new town manager. It's been a distinct honor and a privilege to serve as manager for this community for forty-plus years. I'm extremely grateful to the unwavering support that I've received from past councils and this council, and the commitment, and the leadership, and the trust that they've placed in me. Leaving the job is, that you love, is a very difficult decision, but the time is right, and I'm looking forward to the next chapter in my life and the gift of time that it will provide me. My career in South Kingston has been enriched by the opportunity to work with a highly professional and extremely dedicated staff. I celebrate each and every one of their achievements, and I thank them for their leadership, their vision, and their determination and commitment to provide excellence in public service to this town. I was asked a couple of years ago, what makes a good manager, and what was that one attribute that I had that helped me? And I thought about it for a while, and my answer to them was being able to pick the proper people to work with you. And if I've got that as a talent, I think it proves out as a talent with the people that we have. In leaving, I want to make sure that they get the leadership that they need to be able to do great things for this community, and I know that that's what the intent of this council is. There's a lot of work to be done over the next six months before I say my final goodbye to everyone, but know and know well that I'm not going anywhere, and I will remain in place as long as my services are necessary here. And I look forward to a number of years to be able to Monday morning quarterback everything you guys do. But the time is right, and when I met with the council two weeks ago, I expressed that I wasn't ready for another two-year commitment, and that I felt that doing it this way would be best for the town, because we can get the capital budget in place, we can get the formation of the operating budget in place before the new person comes, comes into the community to take over my seat. With that, hopefully we can move on and not talk about this again until a new guy's hired. That completes my report.
Steve, I just have a couple of comments to make, as I said a few weeks ago. Typically, when I bump into somebody and we discuss the topic of Steve Alfred, everybody's universal comments are, are financial health, and how, what good shape we're in, and how the pensions are well-funded, and fiscally we're just very sound, much, much more than other communities. But one of the things that I've observed, and I told you this, was pretty much just what you said, that over the last three years, and I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, but this side of the table is extremely different. And I told you that I won't name anybody, because I know I would miss somebody, but you have a real knack for picking superstar people to work with you. So, that's why we're in the shape we're in. Hats off. Thank you.
Well, again, it's, we're in the shape we're in, because we've got people that work as a team, and we have people that are dedicated to this community, and it's not just me, it's them that make us here.
You pick them.
And I would also just like to add to that, in the almost forty-two years of service that you've dedicated to this town, the town has changed dramatically and has come a very long way. We are viewed as a very desirable place to live. Our facilities are second to none. You have chosen an amazing, supportive staff who cares about you, not only as the town manager, but also as a person, and it says an awful lot about your character, Steve. I, like I said a couple of weeks ago- I, like I said a couple of weeks ago, I don't think there's a time that I've never been able to have you take my phone calls, or be able to just walk into your office, and I think everybody else feels the same way. You've done a fantastic job.
We've got six months to laud you, but I think definitely the tears in the room are quite a testament, and certainly, your reputation goes much beyond the confines of South Kingston. As I travel around the state advocating for this or that, Steve Alfred is widely known as the best that the state has to offer. So, we'll squeeze everything we can out of you for the next six months, but it's been a great pleasure for me to work with you.
I think one of the things I mentioned was bringing you back as a consultant, as a joke, but I know that if we need your help, you'll be there for us. The one thing I do want to say is that I've never met anyone other, I've met a lot of people, but when it comes to knowledge of our town, being invested, knowing how things work, keeping our town financially sound, I mean, I've, even in business life, I mean, you've done an awesome, awesome job.
Well, now, I have to say something.
We're no computers.
Or ones we could afford, right?
Put the budget together on a 22-column paper.
I remember you and Alan flipping them.
You would have to, if the council got the bid, we'd change 10 cents on a budget. Change every single line item thereafter. But, yeah, I mean, the first computers came in in the mid-'80s, but there's been a lot of change in that 42-year period, as to how we as a community exist.
I don't know what I could say that everyone else hasn't already said, but I think South Kingston's better, because you were part of it, and I just, I'm excited for the next chapter, but I also can't really imagine a South Kingston without you, so I'm glad to hear you're not leaving, because we'll probably be knocking on your door as soon as we hire somebody asking for some help. But just thank you to you and your family for the sacrifice they made, because you really made this community your livelihood, your 100% commitment, and it means so much to so many people. It's the reason why families could settle here, it's the reason why people work here and want to be here, and it's because of you, so, thank you.
You got six months, guys.
I know. Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have the Town Solicitors' Report?
There's no way to follow that, other than to say that although, of course, it's the council that hires me on a day-to-day basis, Steve is the one that I work with and have been doing so since 1995. He has been a mentor, a leader, a model, and you're right, his reputation goes well beyond the town of South Kingston, because there are many people, other solicitors, who call me and say, "Well, how do you do it in South Kingston?" Yes, there'll be six months, but unfortunately, it's going to go by like that, so, we'll just have to squeeze every ounce out of Steve between now and then.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any appointments tonight. If, I know we have a couple of openings, but--
Dale, did you advertise for the, yes, okay. Shouldn't have even asked, I knew you'd be on top of it. I could see that.
Moving on to item number 13, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Schmidt Equipment Company, for the purchase of a John Deere 620G road grader in the amount not to exceed $206,300, and has been further described in the memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager. Anybody have any questions?
There were two bidders, we're recommending going with the lowest qualified bidder, Schmidt Engineering Equipment Company. One of the things I'd note is that the existing trade-in value of $22,000 is substantially more than we'd anticipated.
A machine that's 28 years old with 7,000 hours on it? I would say $23,000 is--
Yeah, but they were easy hours.
Oh, yeah.
Motion?
Motion to approve item 13A as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item 13E, which is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to W.W. Granger in Northbrook, Illinois, for the purchase of a power floor scrubbing machine in accordance with bid specifications, in the amount of $18,690, as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager, dated July 17th, 2017.
This piece of equipment, we had eight different vendors submit proposals. The proposals were not evaluated solely on cost, they were evaluated based on what service level requirements were, and the type of equipment that would be used. The recommendation with Granger, while not the lowest qualified bid, is the one that meets the needs of the community the most, in terms of the use that would occur at the recreation center. I'd recommend the council award as presented in the recommendation from Terry Murphy.
Motion to approve item 13E as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppositions? At this point, we are going to move into item number 14, which is a closed executive session, but at this time, could I have a motion on the floor to close the regular session?
I think you should make a motion--
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A1, to discuss matters pertaining to personnel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.